I know you worried about me.
I know.
You're worried about me. Wait a minute, no, wait a minute. That's it. We don't know if you're chasing. Sometimes you got it. Five. Give and. Good to salute. Yeah, this is where you and I always go.
Chris or Cindy?
Oh, you can all talk. Right, right. Sorry, everybody keep talking.
There we go.
Yeah, I think we'll ask that gentleman right there. See the guy in the blue shirt, he's in charge. The one that's not standing up. He's just asking if you're good for seven o'clock start time, right? Yeah, okay. Because they livestream. You're Chris, right?
You're Chris.
Exactly. Okay, you ready?
She's ready.
I knew this was gonna happen. I knew it soon. Really?
Hi, gentlemen. Yep, and I just assumed. I think that would be appropriate for the D O R S, I think.
What happened?
No, that's.
I think he did. I do. Because there were several questions I remember him answering. Yeah. A hundred percent. There's a big chair right there.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nick Ellis, the chairman of the Board of Finance this year. And if you please rise with the, for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Interelect, public, and individual, with which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, this is our public hearing for our Board of Finance. They have any input from the public. So if we can just come up to the mic, form a line like we normally do, and we'll call on you. And just before you start your comments, your name and address would be helpful for the secretary. Okay, so we'd love to hear from everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. Billy, would you like to start?
Oh, no, I want to go second.
Okay, all right, all right. We'll get someone else to start. Someone else break the ice.
Thank you.
Hello, glad to break the ice. My name is Alison Kennedy, and I live at Thirteen Settlers Road. And I did send a letter into the Board of Finance through these deliberations on this budget, and I just wanted to share some of those comments again tonight. I've been a Bethel resident for the past nine years, and I have three children in the school system. One of my children is on the autism spectrum and utilizes the special education services provided by the schools. All three of my children have needed speech services. The budget proposal, which includes an increase from last year, is necessary to continue to provide necessary services to our growing community. As we saw in Dr. Carver's presentation, not only is our community growing as a whole, but the community of children with disabilities is growing exponentially. We all have a moral responsibility to serve our disabled community. We also have a responsibility to make sure all of our children have access to non-mandated programs such as ROTC, athletics, arts and music, clubs, and activities. As a mom, I can tell you that these programs are vital to our children in so many ways. Our children need to communicate and feel heard. And for some, these programs are the only way for them to really feel that sense of belonging. This is particularly important as we battle the current mental health crisis in our community. For Selectman Carter, I saw you at the recent Community Forum for the State of our Students. And so I know that this is an important issue for you as well. We heard from a lot of our high school students that they don't feel part of our community, that they don't necessarily feel seen or feel heard in the community. And there were so many members of our community there that were not only parents, but business owners, people within our commissions. And now it's time for us to put our money where our mouth is. We were all in that room telling them that we care so much, and this is how we can show them that it's important to us that they continue to grow and be part of our community. So the proposed budget accounts for significant enrollment rates, general inflation rates, increased special education costs, rising healthcare costs, and contractual obligations. And funding this budget should not be a choice, it should be our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't want to cut the line. Jen Larson, 128 Grassley Plain Street. I just, I have a question first. I wanted to ask Dr. Carver and Jen Varielli if we had any further savings from our health insurance?
Is it okay?
Please.
We have, actually. As you know, when we saw the rising cost of health insurance, we went out to bid starting in about December. And the Board of Finance was able to reduce the budget from some of the savings of about $764,000. We are anticipating another $500,000 in savings. So we have recommended to the Board of Finance that they can reduce the budget $500,000 further tomorrow night. And I want to be clear that will not affect any programs for kids. It's really made up for the savings that we're generating through going out to bid.
Thank you. And second part of what I want to say now, knowing the savings that we're getting, is that now with our budget coming down, you know, with 764 and another 500,000, that brings us down quite a bit. And I think that it puts us in line with where we, you know, a number that's reasonable for people to be able to afford, to be able to give us what we need. Our numbers have gone through the roof in the last couple of years. We have so many children in our schools. And as a special ed teacher in Danbury, our neighboring town, I see the numbers, and they are increasing like crazy. And not just kids receiving speech, it's kids with significant needs. And that costs money, and unfortunately, you know, it's unfortunate that it costs so much. It really should be more supported by the state. It really should be funded by the state. But unfortunately, that's not where we are. And as a town, it is our duty to service these children to the best of our ability and give them everything they need to go through their day and get through life. So I'm really hoping that everybody sees where the money is going and that we're not adding frivolous things to our budget and supports the education budget to the level that needs to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Billy.
Billy Michael, 27 and a half, Fleetwood Avenue. Now, what is this significant increase in enrollment? How many? There was, the last speaker said we have a significant increase in enrollment. How much is that? What is significant?
So over the past, we've, our overall enrollment has increased 9% in the last six years.
Nine percent.
It is also expected to increase another 5.1%. The latest enrollment projections that we had over the next five years. So what that equates to, because I know you're gonna ask me, in number of children are, when we did the budget presentation, I think we were 262 up over the, over time. Our enrollment as of March 1st was 3,271. So that's gone up from October 1st, which is the official count. So October 1st in the educational world is the official count. And it's, it was about 3,239. So we, we are gradually inching up every month.
When you look at those, what schools? How does it go through the schools? Like, how many additional per school? Like, what's the breakdown of the, where they go? Are they mostly elementary, are they middle?
Oh, no, it's actually across the grade levels. So we do have students that come in through our Birth to Three program. Those are students with disabilities that receive services at the age of three in our Circle of Friends program. So that, that absolutely is something, I guess, what I would call normal, that comes in over the course of the year. And then when you look at the fluctuation, it's really at all grade levels. I will say, though, that there's been more of a pattern that we've gotten additional students at the Johnson and Middle School level. But they're really coming K-12.
When, when you speak of these population, I lived in this town, and we had 3,660 students. So I look at it as, I look at it a little differently. I remember a much larger student body relative, and this was when the town had under 15,000 people. They were a much larger proportion of the town than they are now. Out of 20,000 people, 3,200 compared to 3,600 with, I had to be, I had to be in the 15,000 range when, in 1976. The bicentennial was the high point of Bethel's student population. And it's amazing when you think how far back that was, and there was that many more students in Bethel's school system. If you, I know you talk a lot about the special needs students. What is?
That was prior to the IDEA grant, IDEA, the law being passed too.
What do you call that? The I?
Individuals with Disabilities Education Act was passed in 1976.
Yes.
And that's when there was a shift in terms of requiring legally mandating and requiring services.
Understood. What is the, our per pupil expenditure?
Right now?
Yeah.
It's about, the state average is a little over 19,000, and Bethel's is a little over 17,000. And as I said last year, that's a little bit of an inflated rate because of the ESER funding that came into, came into the state of Connecticut. So that exponentially, because when they look at per pupil expenditure, it includes a lot of things. It includes what the local appropriation is, any grant funding that comes into the district, what they call in-kind services, which is services that the town provides for the schools, like our SROs, electric, our utilities, things like that.
I'm sorry, does that, that is included in your?
Yep.
Utilities are included in your per pupil expenditure?
And I'm missing one.
What about debt service?
Debt service is not. That is considered outside of the per pupil expenditure. So it's, it's a formula, and it's meant to equalize all districts across the state of Connecticut. So it really compares apples to apples. So that's because in some towns, state funding is more. The amount that the local tax base pays is more. All of those pieces. So it's a way that it equalizes it across the state.
Has the 4.1 million that came from the pandemic, are we, is there anything in this budget that is now in our base?
It is. So as I shared in all my budget presentations, we, this year, and one of the speakers alluded to it, spoke about the increase in number of students with disabilities. We had a significant problem this year really paying for the needs of the students that came into the system after we set the budget from last year. So we had to readjust some of our grant funding to be able to support those students as, as we should, we're morally, legally obligated to serve those kids. So we did have to shift some positions because the grant is, is ending as of the June, September, I think, of 2023. And because of that, we did have to shift some positions into the board side.
Do you know how many positions?
We shifted five paraeducators. And that's the main shift from the grants. In addition to that, we had to add an additional nurse and, and a point for a speech and language pathologist.
So that was all paid for by the federal money?
No. So next year, the, the, I, no, the five paraeducators, to answer your question, the five paraeducators were ones that were included in the grant that were shifted over.
But they're shifted from grant money to money raised by taxes on houses, cars, and businesses?
They're, it is money that we did not have. We were lucky to have the grants, or the impact would have actually been this academic year. The grants kind of saved us. I say that frequently. Because we had those monies, and we have to provide those services, we were able to use it for that purpose. But yes, they are shifting over.
So federal money ended up being responsibility of the local taxpayer, tax base? That's what, I mean, this is, I'm not gonna go into speech, but this is what happens. Anything that has three letters, American Rescue Act, all these things, end up giving us money. And then somehow or another, they end up being, they grow the base of the local budget, which is paid for eventually out of the house you live in, or the car you drive, or the business that you're in. And there's nothing that we can do about it. But I'm against that. I, I raise, I'm so object to federal money, ended up being, ending up raising property taxes because it raises the base. I'm off my, my, my.
And I don't disagree with you. I mean, I do hear you on that. I think that what I would say, though, is that, and I'm, that this is not, please, nobody misinterpret this as being negative, but we also have 62 more students with disabilities in the district. So we would have incurred that expense regardless. It's just that we happen to have the grant money this year to be able to get us through this year.
I'd rather fight that out in this venue to get, for you to get that money than for it to come from the federal government. Just so we had the cops grant. That was the way, we had, we had a 10% increase in our police force without a debate. It all came because it was free money. And then that was in the base. Now, so the average student is about 17,000? That's just the average per pupil expenditure?
In Bethel, the state average is 19,000. Regionally, it's probably over 21.
And we have some people that are being paid for in this budget by local money that came from the pandemic money. There's some money? The five, okay. Now, as far as, every year when we come here, somebody says to me, or someone on the dais will say, "The average homeowner in Bethel with a $7,200 tax bill is going to see a..." Now, what is this year's version?
I'm not sure.
So the, we used to use the 217, yeah, we used to use the $217,000 assessed, sorry. $217,000 assessed home. Because of the revaluation this year, the new median home value in Bethel is $290,000. So with that, with the Board of Finance proposed budget for a median assessed house, the taxes would increase by $797,000. A lot of that involves the revale. If the budget was a zero dollar increase, because of the revale, that same house would go up by $380. So most of that increase we're seeing is actually related to the revaluing of all the town assets. Because home values went up a lot more than businesses do.
So the average is going to go from what? So our average house is going to go to, what is the number? Is it 8,000? Do we hit the 8,000 for the average home?
So I don't have what it go, I just have what the increase would be. It'd be $797,000 before the reduction that's gonna happen tomorrow night that Dr. Carver already talked about. So after the reduction of $500,000, that median home would go up $744.
Please just give me that number, what it's gonna be then. It's what, the average home right now is what, 7,000 X?
So it'd be like 8,300.
Okay. So the average home is 8,300. The average student is 17,000 to educate. And most people are paying, well, I'm gonna say most people. Well, I mean, I can understand why a parent would argue for more spending because if you're tech, if, if you're getting $17,000 worth of service, and if you have two kids, you're getting, say, $34,000 worth of service, and you're paying $8,000 in taxes, I mean, that's, that's a reason to be here arguing for a tax increase. But it's unfortunate that everybody doesn't derive that kind of benefit from the tax increase. Is there, so, so we're looking at, out in the street, when people say to me, "What's gonna happen with the budget?" And I, I say, "Well, the average house is X." And then I would come back from these meetings and say, "The average house is gonna go up to Y." So now we're working at about 8,000, 8,300. That's, that's the number you could go forth into the, into the village. We can go into our village and talk about $8,300 for the average house. Average. I'm, I'm just asking. I'm just wanting to, I want to.
Statement, sorry, all right.
I want to make sure that I don't say something that's not right.
As of the proposed Board of Finance budget, when that's, was handed out tonight, the average home, the tax would be $8,305. Tomorrow night, there's gonna be a reduction by $500,000 from the Board of Ed budget. That's gonna reduce it by another like $50. So you're talking 8250. If you want to go to the streets and talk about it, it'd be like $8,250.
Okay, that's frightening, given the world, the economics.
Hey, Billy, Bill?
Yeah, I'm listening.
We're gonna list some other people?
Yeah.
And then if we have a chance, we'll, we'll get you back up.
Oh, please have a chance.
I'll give you credit.
I'm a little shorter, so I'll move this down. Courtney Martin, 38th Star Lane, thank you so much. I just want to address, first off, the point, because I, I'm sorry, I wasn't taking notes, the comment that we were just talking about, about the AD some hundred. So for all of the people that are in the room that may not understand how mill rates work and budgets work, can we kind of put this in layman's terms? So I'm gonna ask a couple of questions that I may already know the answer to, but I would just like them explained very easily. Dr. Carver, how many kids did you say that we have added since 2015?
About 262. But even since the beginning of the year, it's come up.
Okay. What is the, I don't know, average class size guess in our school district?
So it varies by level, but I would say on average, it's about 25.
So we've added, I don't know if anybody can understand that, we've added an entire grade level of students since 2015.
Correct, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, right, like, so if you have?
That is right.
Right, you've added an entire grade.
Right, because what she's referring to is the average class size. And so the class sizes vary anywhere from like 220, actually over 300. But I would say on average, they're between 250 and 260.
So it's basically like we put a whole nother grade in our schools, right? Whole nother whatever. Per pupil expenditure, a lot of people may not understand what that means. So we take our entire budget, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, and we, how much we receive, and we divide that by the students that we have in our district.
It's not quite true. So we, we, so it, we don't actually do the calculation. The calculation comes from the Office of Fiscal Management. And it includes the local appropriations. It includes any grant funding that the district gets. It includes in-kind service. And I know I'm missing one thing. It's the fourth, it's in my presentation, it's the fourth thing. But, but it's a way that it equalizes all payment across the state of Connecticut.
But every other district is compared the same exact way, correct?
Correct, correct.
So when you say that we are below the state average, would that mean that the amount of money that we spend on our students is less than the state average of what everyone else spends?
That is correct.
In our current budget right now? In our current budget right now, are we asking for, if you're looking at the services that we currently provide to our students, are we looking to raise anything higher than status quo?
No. None of the proposed budget includes anything that is, that isn't currently offered. To Mr., to Mr. Michael's point, the only thing that shifted was the paraeducators from the federal grant to the Board of Ed budget.
Okay. So, compared to last year, we're not asking for any more money. Compared to last year, but how many more kids do we have?
What do we have? Do you have the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Approximately, you can guess.
Right. So, we had two, 3,209, and we're up to, somebody's going to have to do quick math for me. We're at 3,271. So, it's about 60 something kids, right?
So, we're adding 60 students.
62 students.
62 students. How many do, approximately?
October to October.
October, okay.
Yeah.
So, we're adding 62 students, but we're not asking for any extra money to pay for what we currently pay for in last year's budget.
Correct. No, no new programs.
No new anything. As regards to the $8,000, Brad, can you do me a favor and bring out your calculator? So, I don't know if anybody knows how mill rate works, but you, the town comes out, we just did a reassessment of our property values, right? And we said if your house was worth, and I'm going to use layman's terms again, or whatever, because I don't understand math as well as most people. So, the town says your house is worth this, it's like replacement cost, kind of, compared to like Kelley Blue Book cost, right? And now, they're saying it's worth this. When we're talking about what we're taxing people on, we take, if, correct me if I'm wrong, we take 70% of the amount that the town says your house would cost to replace it. And then we divide that by the, or multiply by the mill rate and divide it by 1,000, correct?
Yeah, there's other reasons, but that's the basics of it.
That's pretty much how it works. So, the town needs a specific amount of money in order to run. Are we asking for a lot more money for the town? Like, I understand that everybody's property values went up, but that doesn't mean necessarily that we need more money to run the town. So, our mill rate technically should go down, correct?
So, the proposed mill rate will be less. But just to answer your earlier question, this budget does increase the town budget by $3,869,000. So, it is going up in real dollars.
Sure.
It just jumbled this year because of the revale.
And it's.
And when we talk about the average home, some people will go up more than that, but some people's taxes will go down based on how much their value increased versus the prior evaluate, revaluation.
Okay. Can you repeat that again? You said that some people's taxes, most people's taxes will actually go down?
No, 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 I did not say most people. Some people.
Some people, I'm sorry.
Some people's taxes will go down.
Specifically, whose taxes will go down? Do you have a kind of a guess?
I do not. But if, pretty much.
I mean, I had heard that anybody's house that was under 40% increase would go down?
No, it's more like anybody that didn't go up more than 30%.
Oh, so, so if your house value went up 30% or less, your property taxes based on this current budget will actually go down?
Yeah. I think 30 is like, is like, you'll be flat. But the average home increase for residential went up 37%.
I mean, I know none of you are economists, or do, do anybody know what the inflation was, or like the cost of paper was, or?
Brad, I'd like to comment. In some years, commercial goes up, and some years, houses go up. This year, because there's a COVID bump, commercial only went up 25%. So, their taxes are going to go down. Then you have some people's houses, maybe a McMansion house, a real big house, and their taxes actually are going to go down. It's the houses with the four bedrooms, a couple bathrooms, those in the houses are actually going to go up. If your house was popular during COVID, your taxes are going to go up. That's how I like to explain it.
Okay. Well, I'm going to beg to differ. I've been a real estate agent for a long time in this town, and I've had a lot of experience in that. And the average currently of the house value of every home in Bethel that went up, I think, is 26%. So, that being said, that's, the average house is below 30%, right?
Again, we're not going to get in debate. There are some houses, my house went up 40%. John's house went up 44. So, he's going to get hammered. You see what I mean? So, it's, it's not every house, it's not every neighborhood.
But we shouldn't base our budget based on you, correct?
I'm sorry?
We shouldn't.
No, I'm giving you example because I know what my taxes are. So, everybody has the right to look up what their taxes are, and if you went up, I believe Brad said 37%, after that, you're going up.
Okay. Brad, can I have one more, I have one more question.
So, I just want to correct one thing. It's around 30. If your home value went up like 30%, your taxes, relatively speaking, might be relatively flat, because the residential, per the assessor, with this last revale, went up 37%.
Okay. So, per the assessor, the average four bedroom, let's say, chimney heights, colonial.
Just residential as a whole category.
So, residential, like $350,000 house, do you know how much that went up?
It's, there's so many different variables of it. I can tell you what the average works out to be here.
I guess what the point that I'm trying to say is that we're not asking for any more money, right? We're, we're asking for the same amount of money that we currently need to run what we currently have. We're not asking to increase anything. No one's asking for these astronomical things, the cost of paper, the cost of.
I just want to be clear, we are increasing our budget.
Right, we are increasing our budget. We're not adding, but we're not adding and increasing any.
Correct. We're not adding new programs.
Any specific programs or things, right? We're just, we have all these costs that have gone up. We have how many children that have been added to the school system. We're not asking for anyone to accommodate the extra kids or things like that. We're trying to make do with what we have. And the Board of Selectmen, did you approve that budget? Yes? The Board of Finance, did you approve that budget?
The budget we're working on now?
Yes.
4.53, yes.
Okay. So, everyone I would, could say up here supports the budget that we're asking for?
I don't think anybody said we didn't.
Perfect. That's great. That's all I want to know. Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else, please? Please, just name an address.
Hi, Brad Colts, One Fairchild Drive. I just wanted to clarify something. You had 60 roughly new kids in the schools, and you've got three and a half new teachers, which is about 20 kids per new teacher, correct?
Correct.
So, the schools are adjusting. I don't want to leave here, or people leaving here thinking that your folks aren't doing your job in terms of adjusting for an increase in the students. We've got about 60 kids coming in, you've got about three and a half new teachers, and 15 paraeducators. So, I mean, you're putting more resources in to keep things as they are. We're not going to see a big class size increase. That was kind of where I always thought that was headed, and I just wanted to be clear. We're, we're trying to keep up with the growth, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
One of them was from the tutor, the male tutor that we.
Oh, yes. So, one of those three was a reclassification of tutors to a certified staff member for first, our students who are English learners.
Okay.
So, that accounts for one of the three.
Got it.
And then the other two were math intervention, or interventionists, I should say.
Okay.
That were to meet the needs of students that had, had some academic issues as a result of the pandemic.
So, are we expecting to see class sizes grow because of this budget?
No.
Okay. That was my concern, as I'm hearing.
Correct, no.
Right, okay.
Correct. You are correct.
Thank you.
Richard Schlemmer, Sixth Radio Drive, off of Rockwell. There's a lot of problems with this. Any contractor, whether it's a plumber, a carpenter, a builder, they have to pay taxes on all the permits they get. And where's that money go? Who does that pay?
So, permit fees go into the calculation. So, before we do the mill rate, we take away any other money received by the town that isn't generated by taxes. So, round numbers, if we have a $90 million budget, and $12 million come in between the state and local permit charges.
So, how do you prove that? It's not written down. Everything that goes like this, as a contractor, and I know a lot of contractors, they have to put everything out on the board for you guys to know what it's going to cost, how much it's going to do. You go to lumberyard, you pay tax on that. Anything you buy for housing today, or anything today, it's all taxed. And then we come out and you're raising tax on all the people's houses that are here. Why? I know you need school. I, I don't see anything on here tells us what you're doing with it and how you're doing it. Now, most of the people need to know, yes, some of these people here looked and saw they don't understand what you're doing. Why not? Let's say I came out and sold you a car, and it was an old car. Oh, that's worth a lot of money today because it's more valuable. Well, what if you're not going to sell your car? And you're still charging the tax on it. Is that right? That's taking people's money away from them, especially seniors. In this town right now, there's not enough people that help seniors out. A lot of them are getting sick, they get tired, they go into home housings, and they get charged money for that, too. What do you do for that? I don't see anything on here for doing for seniors. Do you have something?
There are programs that are geared towards seniors and veterans and stuff like that. And the money that the abatements for, the tax abatements we do go into the calculation before we calculate the mill rate.
Is it on here, Brad?
No, it's in here.
Somebody asked me to revenue.
So, as part of the calculation for the mill rate, the local elderly tax benefit is the town put in $402,604. The elderly homeowner benefit is another $103,151. So, that money is calculated as part of the mill rate that we know isn't going to be collected because it's abated.
Okay. So, how many do you split that up to certain people? How does that go?
I don't have that information in front of me, but there are programs that you can talk to the social services or the tax collector's office, and they can give you more information.
I have talked to them. And some of the things they gave me answers weren't correct, as far as I'm concerned. How many seniors do you know that are in this, right now, wondering why they have to pay so much tax on their house? And everything you do to the house, it doesn't matter if it's, I don't know how you figure out, you're just going by the amount of money or how much you think it's worth. That's not printed to us when we get the tax. It's just raising it up, okay? I, on my own house, I did some of the work on my house to fix it, because the contractor who built it didn't do everything right. And I don't blame the building inspectors because they have a hard time. You have a hard time. Police, the state police have a hard time. The local police have a hard time. And there's a lot of things going on with like this. But you need to put something on paper so we all know what you're doing, how you're doing it, and where is it going. I know you don't think about that, but I don't know. How many people agree with that?
Yeah.
Even a few more besides me. So, I'd like to know. I've lived here all my life. I grew up on, up in Chestnut Ridge on a farm. We fed our own animals and took care of all that. And the tax back then was very cheap. And of course, there weren't that many people. Now, we have a lot of people here. And not only that, I also know in the state itself, because of people coming in from Texas, across the border, people up here are paying for them to have housing, which is not fair to the people that live here. And you're paying tax for that to help pay them, and the food, the housing, and all that stuff. Now, is that right? It's good to help people. I actually, I'm retiring this year from, not from work, from volunteer. I do five nonprofits. And I deliver furniture to people who lost their house, and have to get rents and things like that. And they, we give them furniture, TVs, any of that stuff that we collect that are good. And there's a lot of things like that. I belong to the Bethel Food Bank. You know, you know about that, right? You know where it is, in the basement of the, the old First National. So, that's all I want to know. I want to know what, what goes on and, and all these things. I don't get upset either, and a lot of your people don't. People will help if you, if you get the right information. But like this, if this is money, there's a lot of people don't know what a half of this means, money-wise. So, I would, I would suggest to you guys and women that you put something in here so people understand exactly, instead of here standing here asking questions about this.
And sir, can you hear me? Is this working?
Yes, I can.
I want to thank you for your service, obviously, and I can speak for many of us up here. We do look at it very closely. I see you have one of the papers there, it looks like you have the school budget. There's actually another stapled piece out there I'd like you to grab before you leave. It actually gives a breakdown of.
Well, this is the one I.
Yeah, that's the school budget. There's another one out there that shows the entire town budget and all the information you're looking for. And you can come by my office anytime and be happy to go through it, because we do care about what's happening with seniors. In this budget, most things have gone up because of either inflation or salaries. You know, we're not adding a lot of headcount, we're not adding a lot of things. And I'd love to meet with you sometime and talk about it if you.
Well, I understand that, but I know a lot of seniors. I'm going to be 83 in a little while. And, you know, I'm not working. All I do is collect social security. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. And you get taxed on that. I've saved money all my life while working, okay? Put it into the banks and different banks, and without telling me, the federal government charged tax on it, and then the state. So, most people don't know that. So, you're losing money that you paid already tax on, double taxed. So, it's not only like what you do, set budgets for schools and that things, you need to know what's going on, how it's going, how you're going to live, and how you're going to do it. How do you, do you go out to see houses and see what they look like, or you just do it over what the tax and what the, they say?
Well, speaking of the assessment, there's a company that goes and looks at all the houses in town, and they look at the records in the background, and that's how they come up with the assessment number.
Okay. But I've been home almost every day, because I am retired, but I haven't seen anybody stop there. Only one car, and you don't know, because I know the mailbox has been stolen, too. My mailbox got knocked down with a truck. So, you know, I put it up myself. But that's what's happening with people. And you've got to understand, you're younger than we are, so you're doing better. When you get older, things seem to drop down on you. So, if people don't understand that, then how many mothers and fathers you're trying to help in here? You've got to get up there and find out what it is. So, I would appreciate, being here so many years in my life, I was born in 1940, so I've been here a long time. And I served two years in service, and I had it easy compared to a lot of guys. And so, I just want you to know that there are a lot of people like that who don't understand what you're doing. And if you don't have all the information, I mean, when I come in, I didn't see this on the, on the table, but maybe it came in after. But please, do something like that so people more understand what's going on. Now, if I came to you and say, "Well, you owe me $50,000," you're going to say, "Why?" I said, "Well, your material went up." What are they going to say to me?
Why?
Exactly. And you say, "Well, here's my list, okay? This is what it's going to cost to get that material." Okay? It's not going to be 500,000, 200,000. It's the same with the tax. When you're counting on paying your bills and keeping everything fixed when you're on social security or whatever your savings is, if I go in and take money out of my savings, the federal government makes me take it out, and I have to pay tax on it again. It's a double tax. Has anybody said anything about that to anybody? No. But if people don't understand what they're doing, what the bank is doing. In fact, People's Bank, I, I called the manager from Texas, and I told him, I said, what's the idea here? Why are you doing this? What's going on? Because they were selling it to M and T. M and T took it over. But they didn't tell people who govern or, or the people don't ask, so they don't tell them about the tax cut as in by the federal government. I don't know if it is by state, too, but we have to pay state tax, local tax, income tax. And you think about all the money. You guys do it, too, ladies. You have to pay for all that. So you have to watch your budget. So I end up with a $17,000 budget for the year because of all the tax I have to pay off. And I worked all my life to build up so I wouldn't have to have that. So what are we going to do about that? We are all people here from Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You might say your name? Mr. Chairman? Can you ask to respond to the state's name for the record? I may have missed the name.
Sir, can we, sir, can we just have your name and address for the record again? Dan's going to bring you to breakfast.
Well, I'll check your taxes. Six Reader Drive, well, it's a lot. And not only that, but I talked to the town police. There's a lot of calls that people get when they're trying to get the car. And some people don't understand. And there's some should be pushed out. To tell people what to do. I get calls one after the other.
You should make an appointment to see the first selectman because he can answer a lot of those questions and he'll listen to all your concerns.
Well, I'm thinking a little. I, I decided, of all the calls I've-
Could you use the mic so that I can hear?
Sure. Okay. So I get at least 10 to 15 calls like that a day. And I stopped answering. I don't answer anymore. But this is what I do. I, I pick up the phone and hold it near, and then I make my own English out. Hot studio, blah, 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 to pay them. Hello, can you hear? That's him, bro. Give the last one. Be ba ba ba. Who's the meaty? Oh, we're good, taba. And five minutes later, they hang up.
Are you good on that?
Yeah, put that in the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
But that's really hard to follow. All right, first of all, Kim Romero, 114 Chestnut Ridge Road. Hopefully you can hear me with my teacher voice. So I wondered if I could just have a quick qualification because this is what I heard. The three new teachers, one of them is English language learners, and the other two were reclassified as math interventionists. And the money that is being used right now is currently for the grants that we're getting, and it is being incorporated into the budget now because of wanting to keep these three.
No. So one, one is a reclassification.
And can you just explain what re, so we can understand what reclassification means?
So we had a few tutors, I think it was three or four tutors, that were assigned to our students.
And, and sorry, just tutors so everybody can understand the difference between a tutor, a paraprofessional, and a teacher?
A tutor is somebody who applies, works hourly, who supports students. We have them in different capacities for our English learners, our reading and math. But they're very hard to get, just like a lot of people have been experiencing in the private sector, even in the public sector. You know, getting employees and consistent people to work with our, with our students has been problematic. A para educator is someone who works full-time to the district, who gets benefits and works for the most part with students with disabilities. We do have a couple of reading paras that are paid out of our Title I grant, but for the most part, they work with students with disabilities.
And tutors, are they pay, are they the same? They're like, they are similar to an interventionist, but they don't need the degrees or the qualifications as interventionists?
Correct. So the, the interventionists are actually certified teachers who can provide support for students who have academic gaps in literacy or mathematics. So that's the difference.
So the reclass, the reclassification was to take those tutors that we had and, and make them into two math interventionists? And the other teacher that was hired-
Oh, no, excuse me. The tutors was to, to do our English language.
Perfect, okay. And then the two for the math interventionists, they were hired with the money that was from the state and the national grants. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So in order to keep them, we're reincorporating back into the budget?
That's correct. They are services that we currently offer.
Perfect. So I'm going to speak on that for a moment. I think that it's really important that we talk about those math interventionists and the importance of those math interventionists. This is a fairly new thing for us to have math interventionists, particularly in Bethel. I know we've had math coaches. I know we've had some people. But to the extent that we really need these math interventions, this is a fairly new thing. All districts in the areas have these math interventionists, but I'm very excited that Bethel has two math interventionists. In fact, if I could, I would double it. I would get four because we are not getting enough math support. If I'm correct, and please correct me if I'm wrong, when we do the NWEA map testing, the children that receive that math interventionist, for the most part, must fall below the 30th percentile in order to receive services.
It's actually lower than that?
Okay, so could you tell me what percentile on the map test? Now, everybody, this is the NWEA map test that we use to show what our growth is. We use it to show a lot of things in the district, and every student's required to take it. So on these tests, they scored in a percentile of 100 kids, correct? And it's like one percentile, one to 100 each kid. So in order to do that, 100 kids, we would test those 100 kids. Of that percentile, what would a child need to get to receive a math intervention?
So I want to answer, I want to say one thing before I answer that question. We do have and have had, the board has been committed to add, adding math interventionists, so they are not our first math interventionist.
No, 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 but this is a newer thing to have the math interventionist.
That's correct. I would say for the past five or six years, we've been adding and slowly adding as our data has shown that. I think, I think, as you know, as a teacher, after COVID, it's, it's significantly worse.
Significantly worse, yes.
And I'm going to look at Dr. Brooks, but I believe it's below the 20th percentile. She's nodding, so that is correct. That would receive direct math intervention, support from an interventionist.
Okay, so another question that I have for most of the schools is what is the percentile that we would like our students to be at? So on the NWE map scores, I teach in a different district. My district looks for 80th percentile for students to be at. What is the percentile that we look for in Bethel?
So it's over the 61st percentile?
Great.
Correct.
So that means that those, we are looking for students overall to be at the 60th percentile. And we're looking for us to increase our scores so that we have students that are above the 60th percentile. So what I'm hearing you say is that even with these two math interventionists, which we'd like to keep, you are only, we are only getting services for kids that are in, did we say 20th percentile? Is that what it was?
Correct. By an interventionist. So we do have some tutors that support kids that are in the-
But, but as far as in a math intervention, and I, and I, believe me, our schools are phenomenal with helping our students. So I want you to know that I support our schools. But I want to specifically talk about these math interventionists. If I'm hearing this correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, 20th percentile to 60th percentile do not get the support of a math interventionist. Is that correct?
They, they, so yes and directly because the math interventionists support tutors.
And I know we also have coaches, and I know that they work with teachers, and the programs are really good. But in general, with the math interventionist-
For direct services, they do not.
Okay, great.
Typically, they do not. Sometimes they do, but typically they do not.
But typically, it's the 20th percentile or lower.
Correct.
Okay, so the reason I want to speak on this is my, I have personal experience with this with my daughter. My daughter has worked as hard as humanly possible in the Bethel Public Schools, and she would not be seen as a student who gets intervention, 35th percentile for math every single year, no matter what she does. And she has never once had a math interventionist for support because we don't have it for that 20th percentile and above. So she's 35th percentile. She's not failing. So my daughter doesn't get services for math intervention because we don't put it forward for that. I think that's really important. Thankfully, in the middle school, she now is getting the support because she is in a collab classroom. And so she has another teacher within that classroom that I was able to get her the support of. My daughter has a 504. I do not have her on special education services. However, she deserves the right to have that math intervention support that she never got kindergarten through fifth grade. And as Dr. Carver's saying, my daughter's in eighth grade, so therefore, in her kindergarten year, they did not have that because, as you said, there's five years. So my daughter's now in eighth grade. In kindergarten, first, and about second grade, there were no interventionist supports for her. But even if there was, up until middle school, there has been no support for her with an interventionist because we cannot, if they're doing this, the 20th percentile. So the reason that I'm up here is I, for those, I wanted to clarify first. But also just to say, first of all, to the Board of Ed, Board of Finance, thank you for supporting this budget. I think it's really important that we include it. And I think it's important for people in the audience who are not in the schools to hear, number one, from a parent, but also to hear in general what those positions are. So the ones that they're incorporating back in, the ones that we're paying for with those two interventionists for math interventionists, they mean that when a child like my daughter comes through the Berry or Rockwell or Johnson, which are the K-5 schools, maybe as we add more to it, we will be able to get the support for them. I have fought hard, and I have to pay out of my own pocket for my daughter to get tutored up until this point. Now that she's in the middle school, she's in a collab class, and I'm able to get the support for her. But I think it's really important to notice that those interventionists are important. We need to keep them. And if possible, I mean, we're, we're getting rid of the 500,000. I understand, I appreciate, you know, the tax burden. I'm in that middle class right there. I am, my, the salary for my family, I mean, I'm a teacher. I get a teacher's salary. So I get it. I am getting that tax burden as well. I think we need to make sure that these stay in the schools, so.
Thank you.
Mike Messenger, 174 Chestnut Ridge Road. I just wanted to make a couple comments. First, I'll make the icebreaker I made last year. We moved here almost two years ago with four kids, so we represent almost 2% of the growth ourselves. I did want to make two comments. First is, many, many years ago, I was an auditor, which is like a bad word, with Ernst &amp; Young. And I saw a lot of towns. And there's no static, you know? Growth is hard. But the opposite of growth, you know, is decline. And, you know, as an example, I, I had a client in Steubenville, Ohio, which is the home of Dean Martin, right? We have P.T. Barnum. They have Dean Martin. Has anyone heard of Steubenville?
Yes, I have.
Wow! But no one's living there. Anyway, I shouldn't make fun of Steubenville, but it's in the decline. It's not a good place to be. Growth is sadly where you want to be, which means you have to manage it. And so what makes a town attractive? And I would argue it's three things. The school system, safety, which is our police and emergency response, and access to health care. I think Bethel has two of those. I'm still gauging access to health care. No offense to Danbury. And to the comment that not everyone benefits from this, I, I think everyone benefits from investing in our schools because nothing maintains and increases property values, which is pretty much everyone's primary net worth growth over their lifetime, than investing in the schools. Nothing. That's what makes people want to move somewhere and pay for a house. So I would just say, you know, I support the budget, and I hope everyone else supports the budget because it benefits everybody, and I think everyone should understand that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else waiting for a turn? There's a lot of people here. No one else would like to speak? Billy, I'll give you five more minutes.
To that, Billy Michael, to that last speaker, oh, you got it first time. First time.
Anthony Orico, 11 Grandview Avenue. 30 years. I have a que, um, first question I have is for our superintendent. On the line item where it says percentage change of teacher salaries, 5.13, that includes the three plus new educators, correct? So that number's kind of inflated.
It also includes, some of it's a reclassification from some other lines. So, so like you-
No, he's right. It's not, this-
So I see 5.13.
They're not receiving a raise of 5%.
That's, that's a little inflated, correct? That, I mean, if you took away the, the new employees, that number would go down.
Yes, correct.
Which is, which is a, a good number, I think is a good number.
Correct. The, the increase for, the contractual increase for teachers this year was 3%, and that includes staff movement.
Okay, okay. The point I'm trying to make, and I think that's very fair, and I, and I'm a, I'm a frugal guy, so I, I, I think that's pretty fair. Also, I looked and I saw that the police salary increases four and change, correct? Salaries? The thing I was disappointed at is all the other salary line items, all above three and four. I, I don't think, I don't, I think you guys should have sharpened your pencils a little better on that one.
Can I answer that real quick?
Sir, yeah, can I, when you say the police budget, they're a couple of years of increases. So they're not getting 4% for this year. They're getting caught up for a new contract, so that's-
No, I think four is fair. I think four is fair, more than fair. In fact, I, I go, I, I can go above that, but I think four is fair. I think three is more than fair. My problem is not with, they're more, the, the teachers and the police are more, are, are two most important things in the town. What I'm concerned about is when I look at this budget and I see salary, 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 salaries all down the line, I see a dozen or more more than the teachers and the police. That doesn't make sense to me. So-
Again, the Board of Finance pays the bills, but we don't negotiate the union contracts. That is, in past administrations and obviously current administrations also. That's a, something that's promised to them. They deserve it, and we have to pay for it.
Mr. Chairman, can I just answer that real quick? There, that number is deceiving. So if you look at the, let's take Highway Department, right? The Highway Department looks like it's up 5%. So last year, at this time, there wasn't a contract for the Highway Department. So their potential increases were put in the 420 wage adjustment account. Their contract is since settled. So the 5% you see in there is really last year's raise for fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24s. So it's a two, that's a two-year increase.
How would anybody know that?
It is discussed as part of the budget process, but I understand your point that, like, you'd have to know.
So how do I know when I go down my list and I look at six, uh, 5%, four and a half, four, seven, five, five, that, 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 that? What's two years? What's three years? What's this year? What was promised? I, I don't, I don't have any detail. I, I mean, I have to go to every budget meeting to figure that out?
No. Uh, we could give you that information if you ask for it. But it, it's very, it'd be a very long handout if we tried to give you all that stuff. But if you look at, so account 10-420, it's a top of page, top of page three of the town handout, the second line down, wage adjustments.
10-320, you're saying?
10-420.
10-420. Okay. Miscellaneous charges and transfers?
So that is where the salary increases for non-union and union, that contracts are up, so that are, need to be negotiated are in that line item. Last year is $434,000. This coming year is $331,000. So that is a decrease of 24%. That, because that is decreasing, it's spread across the other ones as the contracts have settled. The police contract is actually not settled. The police contract is actually not settled. So the police contract wage is in, is part of that 331,000 number. That 4% that you referenced for the police was for, the Board of Selectmen added an SRO last year and used federal funds to pay for it the first year. Now it's part of the budget. There's an increase in police of half of a police officer in the '24 budget. Plus, last year, the police were giving one and a half officers, so now you got to pay for the other half. And just so everybody knows, when we do a half like that, it means they can hire the person January 1st. So, so last year's budget called for them hiring one police officer right away and one in January. This one calls for them hiring one in January. That's the half. But you got to pay for the other half that you promised them last year. Plus now they have to pay for the SRO.
Like I said, the, our education budget and our police budget, I have no, I have no problem with. It's the other line items that concern me. And with you saying there's other variables, okay, that's fair, but I don't see that on here. So I just look and it says, you know, salary's 5.5, salary 4.9. I have no idea. I say, geez, I'm not getting that at work.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment, Mr. Chairman? You know, I completely understand in the sense that the budget process is complicated. But it's worth knowing that up until this point, a couple of things have happened. You know, the first thing that we do is a Board of Finance and a Board of Selectmen. We get together and we actually get the budget presented by each department. And that process takes two nights. One of them, I think, started at 7:00 PM and went till 10, 11 o'clock at night. So they're long processes. And then it comes back to the Board of Selectmen. We go through, take another cut at it, which is usually a long meeting. Then it goes to the Board of Finance again, which is another long meeting. And I think my point is it's very difficult in just one public hearing. So if you have specific questions, reach out. I'll be happy to meet with you. Brad will meet. It's very difficult in this, just to have for this part and give you all the background of what happened. Something as simple as a, you know, in Public Works, we changed to an engineer from a tech. That makes a big difference. But it also makes a big difference in the town as what we're able to accomplish with that person. If we save money somewhere else in our contracted budget. I can assure you, we've all gone through this. We haven't added a lot of headcount. We haven't added, you know, things that you would not be happy with us. So if you'd like to meet with me at some point or Brad, I'd love to speak with you.
No, listen, I believe what you're saying. I just, from looking at these, this paper, you would never know that. You don't know those variables that, you know, you guys talked about, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Hi.
How are you?
Naomi Hambrecht for Chipmunk Terrace. I didn't necessarily have any questions, just a friendly reminder to our community that it's a little short-sighted not to invest in our schools. And I know that there are demographics in our community that don't have any involvement with the schools necessarily. But I just want to remind our community that there are VHS graduates running businesses in this town. We are a small town. We retain a lot of our people. You've been born and raised here. You've chosen to stay here. The kids coming through our schools will likely give back to our community in one way or another. So I feel like even if you don't have kids in the system, you don't have to be a parent in the system. I moved here before I had kids. I've been here 18 years. And I happily paid into that voted yes for that school budget because I understand the importance of it to the community as a whole. So just a friendly reminder on that, that it benefits all of us as a whole when you say yes to that. It's unfortunate the costs that come with that, but there's importance in it. Also, I know that there's a typical vote no crowd, and that's why I bring this up. But I want to remind everyone that if you are wanting to vote no at a school budget, it's too late. You need to be involved in the overbuilding. You need, that's where you need to vote no. That's where you need to be involved. Because if you feel like we're getting too big and our schools are getting too full, you need to take a stand there and get involved sooner than later. This is not the time to do it, voting no on a school budget. We're cutting our nose off to spite our face. We're only hurting ourselves. If you really want to put a lid on it, you got to do it at the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so everybody understands, the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance has not cut $1 from the Board of Ed's budget. Dr. Carver, can you?
That's correct. All of the cuts came from the health insurance savings.
From Jennifer and Dr. Carver.
That's correct.
Name and address, please?
Bill Oaks, 31 Old Hollyville Road. So a couple of things people are talking about, not understanding what's going on here, missing information. So it's transparency, right? So let's talk about, what's the grand list last year, Brad, to this year?
the summary I was given says some of prior appraised, actually, I have a better way to look at this. So the grand list in the prior year was $2,171 million and change. The grand list now is $2,740 million.
So what's that difference?
Almost $569 million.
Okay. So that's a very large increase this year. So it's good that people understand that, right? You guys are asking for an absorbent amount of money on top of that now with higher taxes going up to people, the REA vals, a lot of stuff that's going on in town, a lot of stuff people probably don't know was paid with ARPA funds to kind of squelch the tax burden on the people. So with new change going on here, let's be a little bit more open and honest about the money and how we're spending it, you know? So Dr. Carver, you say all this stuff about new students coming in. How many teachers work in the schools and their kids go here for free?
No kids go here for free. There is a Board of Ed policy that allows our students, our staff, if they live in another community and they pay a percentage. I don't remember the exact percentage of what the overall tuition is. And I don't have a number here, but it's roughly been about 30 students. But I can't like speak to it and I can, I'd be happy to get you that information for tomorrow.
Okay, so 30 students, that's like at the classroom and the teacher?
It's actually not because the difference is, is that each, if we have one student's a kindergartner, one student's a fourth grader, one student's a high schooler. So it's spread out throughout the grades. And actually, Board of Ed policy, if it causes you to add a teacher, then we have to reevaluate whether or not we can continue to use those, to include those kids.
Okay. So we're talking about adding FTEs, but we also have to take into account that if we add two cops, maybe two cops retired, right? So I think there's like, has to be some open communication if officers are retiring and we're kind of filling that spot, whereas generally a new hire. So there's stuff like that that I think people need to be aware of too. But hey, I'm not going to make any motions for cuts because I just get laughed at. So hey, enjoy your yes vote. Too hot.
Just for the record, there is no motion being made tonight. This is public input, but thank you.
Diane Ryan, 13 Karen Drive. Thank you for all the work that you do. I know it takes a lot of work. I brought up before about, I know you all have name tags that are in the municipal center and they're not up there, so we don't know who you all are. And we need that for all the different boards, which I brought up before at a selectman meeting. I just wanted to ask also, in 2020, I think it was, the budget was over Zoom because we couldn't get together. I think it was the next year as well. I think I started going when it was over Zoom initially. And I'd like to understand, what is the IT issue with not having meetings over Zoom? I would think in the high school that you'd have that ability to do. I don't know if you've decided to do that or not. Maybe you can answer how, who made that decision? Because there's a lot of older people who can't drive at night that may join over Zoom who want to know what's going on, so that's one thing. I don't know if you want me to ask my questions and then you answer or?
I can answer the question about Zoom. So the meeting is being livestreamed tonight and it was distributed. So we have our students up there that are actually filming it. It's being livestreamed and there's a link. If you can't watch it live, you can watch it tomorrow and go in and see it. The problem with Zoom in this setting is unlike the, is it Meeting Room A that you guys made in? There aren't the mics, there aren't the, we tried to do it. We tried to do it during COVID where we'd have people on the screen and then people in person. And it became very problematic because it's not, the room is not wired to be able to handle that kind of infrastructure. So we, but we did want to, and Mr., our first selectman, Carter, asked me if we could livestream it so people could participate, at least hear and see that. So that is happening right now.
And how do people know what that is?
It was, I believe the first selectman put it in his newsletter. It's been in my newsletter. I've put it on social media. So we tried to put in a lot of different mechanisms to make people aware.
Okay, it's not in your letter that was on the website.
You mean the agenda?
The agenda website. And the one link doesn't work with the, it goes back to the same page. So we had discussed about the IT issues and the website for the town being more user-friendly. And I'm looking on here and it says for the town, it says IT, it had $53 or something. And I'm just wondering, you know, if you can do something more with the IT issues in the town so that it's more user-friendly and more able for everyone to be able to see what's going on. Have somebody take a check of the link, make sure it works before you have your meeting so that the people who are, you know, live, you know, or on Zoom or whatever, you know, have the better information. I wanted to ask whether everyday math is still being used because my youngest,
It's not.
Okay, that's a good thing. Because I was going to ask whether you needed more tutors after having everyday math.
Nope, it's not.
Okay. Because my youngest had that and was missing a lot of things when she went to take her SATs. And maybe it was because the teacher also had passed away and they had to, you know, replace him with someone else. But, and the tutors, you have on here minus 121% for tutors.
Correct. And that was what I was referring to. So the $67,000 that's, that was minus from that line was a reclassification into the teacher line. So we replaced, I can't remember how many tutors, like three or four tutors that were working with Ls to the, to a certified teacher. So that's why you see a reduction in that one line. It's to the other gentleman's point. It's not explicit in there, so I can see where there's questions. And it's great feedback for us to maybe provide some additional information as we're presenting this where there might be questions, but that's what it is.
Okay, because I thought that maybe the ARPA funds could be used to help. Aren't the ARPA funds can't be used to help tutor children work?
No, they did. They did. Unfortunately, what's happening to Mr. Michael's point, and I rarely say Billy's right, but he is. It's a, write this down, write this down. Write this down. But he's right. When you don't have the sustainability in funding and you have, and listen, we needed that money. We needed that money to support technology. So we did use it for our students and our staff to replace technology. And we tried to use it in ways, there, I think with the town and with the schools, there was a little bit difference in terms of how we could use our ARPA funds. We actually had to write a grant to the state of Connecticut and they had to approve how we spent that money. Some of them were through tutors and that's one of the reasons that we're losing, we're losing some of that funding this year.
Okay, but there is a lot of ARPA money left.
We only have one more year of it.
Right, but you have to use it.
Right, and every penny of it is accounted for.
It is.
Yes. Because when we have to, we have to actually submit a grant to the state and it's actually on our website. We have something called the Financial Dashboard. And you can see exactly where all of those funds were allocated towards. Some of it was to HVAC here at the high school. You know, we used it for technology and some of it was to use to support our students. So it was a variety of different things.
Dr. Carver, I think there might be, needs to be a distinction between ESAR grants and ARPA funds. I think that's getting conflated, so.
Yes, so there's, so the federal, to the school systems, I can't speak to the town. There were two separate influx of monies. One was called ESAR II, which stands for the Education of Secondary Education Act. And then the second grant was called ARPESR. And so they were given to us at two different times, but consecutively. ESAR II ends at the end of this year. And ESAR III, or ARPESR, the ARP funds as they call it, end in 2024. And that's how they were designed.
Okay. The other question, and a couple of women before me had mentioned about the building that is all being proposed in town. And there's quite a lot and it keeps going and going. And there's, you know, I'm sure about the affordable housing that is approved by P&amp;Z to go up on Route 6. I think it's five buildings or whatever. And there's a lot of other building too. And I'm just wondering if you look ahead to see, you know, what is it going to, how's it going to affect the schools? How's it going to affect the town? You know, I know you're doing this year's budget, but do you look ahead to say, you know, and give some feedback to these other boards, you know, that are, that may maybe need to build another school or there's not enough, we're going to end up raising, you know, class sizes? Because I know back, we've been here for 37 years and all of my kids went through the school system and I love it. They did well in college and everything. But, you know, the concern is that you're going to have really high class sizes, you know, with all this building that's going on. And I, you know, and maybe even need more, more help for special, special need children or whatever. So I'm just wondering if you do look ahead and communicate with the other boards? Because I don't, I haven't been seeing it when I go to the P&amp;Z meetings, anything, you know, from you all on what it means for the fire department or for the police or, you know, schools or whatever, so.
I can only, I can only speak for the schools. And I can, I will tell you that I haven't directly spoken to P&amp;Z, but I've certainly communicated to the town. I've communicated to the Board of Ed in my budget presentations that the building is going to infect enrollment. It absolutely will. If we, even one-bedroom apartments sometimes bring kids into our system, that's less likely. But whether it's two bedrooms, definitely probably brings a group of kids in. I mentioned before that we recently had an enrollment study done by NESDEC, which is a, it's a professional organization that does enrollment studies. That's part of what they do. And based on, and they look at P&amp;Z, they look at all of those factors. And they're estimating in the next, was it five years? I know it's up to five, over 5%, but I will tell you that every time we've had an enrollment projection, it's been massively understated. We had, we had two separate enrollment studies done for the Johnson and Rockwell projects. And I think they were a couple of hundred underestimated for that. So yes, we have communicated that it is an issue.
And I know you, we have a very good special ed department here. So I'm sure that people move into the area because it is good. So it's a good thing and a bad thing in a way. But, you know, there probably will be more, more needs in the schools is my thoughts. And I don't know as far, nobody else up here is fire department or police department. But I mean, you know, you are adding more people because of more people being in town. And I think, you know, what she had mentioned is right. We do have to make a stand. As a town, what do we want to be? You know, do we want to be a city or do we want to stay a town? So that's all I really have. Thanks.
I want to apologize. I didn't have everybody introduce themselves. If we can just start again. I'm Nick Ellis. If we can go down the line and just introduce.
Cynthia McCorkendale.
And I'm John Lennon, a Board of Finance member as well.
Dan Carter for Selectmen.
Mary Churchill, Recording Secretary.
Brad Herring, Controller.
Jen Verelli, Director of Finance and Business Operations for Bethel Public Schools.
Christine Carver, Superintendent of Schools.
Melanie O'Brien, Chair, Board of Education.
And we have one more. Dee Foster walked in late. I just want, can you raise your hand? Thanks, Dee. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Any seconds?
I know it's late. Everybody wants to go home and watch television. You know, Mr. Schlemmer, there's not a lot of people here that remember this, but he channeled Frank Franc. Frank Franc was a farmer in Bethel, renowned, the Franc property. Some of you know it because of the land trust. But boy, did you sound like Frank Franc, almost the hold the body type, word for word, the phrasing, the cadence of his voice. But, you know, to his point, when you say transparency, everybody wants transparency. And I always, I mean, I'm not going to vote yes on any budget increase that's going to take the average to $8,000 from $7,200. I mean, people just know I'm not going to. And I know the parents of school-aged children, of course, are going to vote for it. But to Mr. Schlemmer's point, you've got the school budget, and I've asked you this before, what percentage of your budget does the Board of Finance actually have discretion over?
The Board of Ed, so the Board, for the Board of Finance, they can only cut the bottom line, right? So they can only, am I wrong?
We can cut the whole line, but the bottom line.
Right. The Board of Ed is, it is one of their core responsibilities to establish the budget.
Okay. So they can't, they have no discretionary control over your budget? No, line item, bottom line. And the town meeting, the town meeting assembled, do they have line item, do they have line item control over your budget? Could they make a motion? Okay, so you're insulated from the taxpayer at the town meeting. The laws, no, bottom line, you know, discretionary.
No, that bottom line is very important, Billy. It's critical. I'm not following you.
It literally strips any control from the people that pay the bills from,
The bottom line.
Yeah, but I'm, there's times when people want, they, they want something cut in the school budget specifically, but it's not going, they're not going, they can't do it at the town meeting. And then if the budget is voted down, you could not, you could cut it somewhere else if you cut it at all. What I'm saying is they have very, the Board of Finance has virtually no discretionary control over your budget. Your budget is made up, it's 86% of your budget is untouchable, right?
Billy, taxpayers can come to our meetings, they're public meetings, and if they have an issue, they bring it before us.
They have, there's no,
If they're not happy with the program, the way money is spent.
There's no, you are a power beyond description. You have, you're in a protective cocoon during the pandemic. People are losing jobs. People are losing jobs. People are, lives are destroyed. Your people got raises. Your people, you, if you were in the public sector, and it goes for the public sector as well as the school sector, you were in a protected place. You didn't have to think about, did your profit margin get so small that all of a sudden you're out of a business? See, that's the world I live in. I live in with people that aren't in the government, aren't protected.
No, I, I beg to differ. We are in the real world.
Oh, you're in the real world.
We're dealing with inflation. We're dealing with COVID. You might have heard about that. You know, it really was.
You benefit from COVID.
No, 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 give me my moment.
You have $4.5 million dollars.
Billy, let me speak.
Go ahead.
This was a very, very difficult last few years for our staff, for our families, for our kids. And what they lost because of COVID.
What they lose.
It's going to take years for us to get that back. The mental health issues. Come to some of our meetings, we'd be glad to share.
Did anybody get a deduction in their paycheck?
You know, the shortages of staff that we have, just getting people and retaining them, Bill?
Yeah.
So I'm happy to have a conversation with you.
Who lost a job in your sector compared to our sector? This is a, this is a, I'm just saying, you are in a protected cocoon that is not the real world. And when we come up here and say, you can't have more money every single year. We're booed and we're, just the way now, people are upset about the housing. There's a lot of density. So the people that don't want over density, an over density, you know what we're called? We're anti-homes. See, we're anti-school. We're anti-homes. You claim the high moral ground in all this. People are dying. Their businesses, people don't even know what world they live in anymore. And you're going to raise taxes to this degree? I'm voting no.
Hi, I'm back. Courtney Martin, 38 Star Lane. I'm just going to keep it really brief. Our teachers have worked so hard over COVID. I can't even begin to express to you the amount of extra hours, time, effort. They had to create entire new curriculums over Zoom. A lot of them didn't even know what Zoom was. They're teaching children. They spent several years teaching children that they had never even seen their face. They only saw from like their nose up. I will say it out loud, even though it's embarrassing to say, right? My have three children, one who's at the University of Alabama. They've all gone through Bethel Public Schools. My daughter, who's in ninth grade, is doing well because she had the benefit of not being in COVID. However, I have a sixth grader who spent a lot of the formative years of his life behind a computer screen while the teachers were doing everything that they could. He, he is below in reading. He is below in math. He is struggling to keep up. I'm a member of the Board of Education and I get absolutely zero special treatment, right? My kids get absolutely nothing more than anyone else's. And they're struggling. And these teachers, again, have gone above and beyond to provide our kids with more than we could ever possibly even ask for. Other districts look to Dr. Carver to find guidance on how to run programs. Our kids are, I don't want to say they're doing better than most, but they're doing better than most with the little amount of money that we have. But at the end of the day, you can't squeeze any more lemon juice out of a lemon that's been like pulled through a grinder 1,500 times. I am a Republican. I'm a.
Can you address the boards, please?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm Republican, I'm, I'm addressing the crowd. I'm extremely fiscally conservative. When I tell you that we have looked at these budgets through a fine tooth comb and we have spent every single moment trying to make sure we're not overspending for the, for the town and for the community, please believe it. Because, I mean, again, my own children are affected. Thanks.
Alice Hutchinson, 182 Greenwood Avenue. This budget is not just the school budget. It's not just the town budget. I own a small business in town, which many of you already know. But we would not have made it through the pandemic or the last 11 years we've been here without community support emotionally, financially, all of it. So this, this budget, and I know from years of experience, the first budget is always the best budget. And the best budget is from months and months of working on it in individual boards and individual presentations. So I thank you in advance because I know that the boards and commissions are volunteers and they put in a lot of hours and they do a lot of outreach. So I thank you in advance for all your hard work. I'm in support of this budget and thank you for all you do.
Linda Salati, 15 Eagle Rock Hill. I work at Johnson and even with our current services, we are still overwhelmed. So I support our budget. I appreciate you not cutting. It's very important, not only to the academics of our students, but definitely to the social emotional health of our students. I see this in my own daughter who's in the high school. She goes to the, the mental health and she was doing the presentation with a bunch of the high schoolers. And it really affects her when the public doesn't support our schools. I see a lot of her classmates making positive effects in our community. And I do believe that every student who is in our school system benefits from everything we do in our community. They see when they're not being taken seriously as young adults. They see when people don't support their emotional health as well as their academic health. And I see on a daily basis all the new kids that come in. And just within the past two weeks, just at Johnson School, there have been seven or eight new kids just in the past two weeks. I think today I got two more emails saying that we have two more new kids. It is constant. And when we say there's an average class size of 25, that's not everywhere. It's higher. And a lot of our kids that come in from other places have distinct needs. Every student in our, in our whole community, they deserve whatever we have to give them. It's not just we're giving to special education students. We're not just giving to intervention students. We're giving our heart and soul to all of our students. I feel very passionately about how hard everyone is working. I walked in with a teacher who has her laptop with her because she needs to have time to do what's right for her kids. But is it right that she's constantly working even at a town meeting? No. I don't feel that that's okay. I understand that our taxes are going up every year and I feel it as much as everyone else. But I feel very strongly that we need to support the future of our town, as someone else also said. I disagree with, I respectfully disagree, when people have said that we're not, not everyone benefits, because we do. We are a community. And it's important to support the future of our community. So thank you for supporting our budget. Thank you for all the hard work that all of you have done to make it something that we can sustain. Even though in my heart, I know we need more. I hope that most of our community, if not all, sees the benefit in what people have been trying to do to sustain us through the past few years. It, to say it's been difficult is a gross understatement. It's above and beyond that. And the social emotional health is not just about students. It's also about the staff. It's also about people like you who has to support what's going on in our schools. It's everywhere. And I know that certain people think it's fake. It is not fake. Every new student we get, we try to make a connection with them. That's part of the social emotional health of our buildings and of our community. To overload a teacher with too many students, it makes it more difficult for them to have that one-on-one connection with every student, which is absolutely essential. As we know, when we hear about the surveys that talk about how many kids don't feel like they have a trusted adult, that breaks my heart. It doesn't matter what staff members are making that connection from the person in the cafeteria to an interventionist, to the secretary, to the teacher. We're all trying to connect with our kids so they know that they are important to our community. And when they hear the messages of negativity towards the school system, they are impacted, especially our older students. My daughter, for example, as well. I hear about their point of view quite often as she's gotten older. And it really, they take it to heart that the community cares for them or they don't care for them. And you know teenagers, sometimes they're very black and white. But their main point is that they can walk downtown and go to our local businesses, Bird's Books, they can go to Famous Pizza and feel safe, valued and respected in their own community. And that's what all of us have been trying to do for the past few years. It's really hard to do that over a computer. So, you know, we've tried so hard to stay face to face with our students. There's a good reason for that. I think we'll see that in the future. I think it will come through. And those, the meetings that they've had at the high school, if you haven't been to any of them, I think that you've missed out because it really gives a good insight into how our young people are feeling. And those are the future of our community. They are the future of our community. Thank you for supporting the budget.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Name and address again, please, Brad.
Sure. Brad Colts, One Fairchild Drive. Just a couple of questions. I see that the library budget, not the school library budget, the library budget, thought we'd talk about something else for a moment, is going up about $18,000. My question is, is that enough? The library is one of those pillars in the community where families go, seniors go, everybody goes. At least everybody that I hang out with goes. And I'm just wondering, is that enough? And what was, what's the thinking behind that? What are we not doing that we should be doing?
Well, I, I just think Megan, the director there, is doing a great job.
She is.
Last year she came in at zero.
Yeah.
This year was a very small increase because of salaries. Again, there's union employees there. And she feels she can run her programs and add programs with that budget there. So we're comfortable with that number.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, every year she comes in, she tells us exactly what she's changed. She's changed a lot of things to digital. She's upgraded things that reduce the expenses. So she's doing a great job. She really is.
No, I know. I just wonder if we gave her more resources, what an amazingly more great job she would do. Okay, just had to ask, saw it there and was surprised it was not higher. I do have a couple of questions. I know I got to talk about school budget a little bit. Just things I want to understand. It looks like about 22% of the salary expense for the schools are non educators. Is that about average throughout the state, throughout the country?
I would say yes. There's a pretty detailed comparison, if you're really interested in that. There's a, there's a website called EdSite.
I'm familiar with it.
Okay. If you go under each district, there's something called a district report card. And it does do comparisons with different categories with regard to, you know, comparisons like to administration, to teachers, to all of those pieces. So the answer is yes.
Okay. At the risk of somebody throwing rocks at me, I'm going to also ask this. Does this budget reflect the resources that the schools need to start moving the outcome needle better? Or is this a status quo number? And I ask that because I heard earlier tonight, for example, some of our metrics don't necessarily match some of the neighboring communities' metrics in terms of overall performance. And Bethel's full of a lot of really smart, hardworking kids. So I know it's not the kids and it's full of an amazing group of teachers who, right? And so it's, it's not those teachers. So I'm trying to figure out what, what does this not reflect that we need to do to actually start moving that needle? And at what point do you think, as a community, if this doesn't, we'll be ready to have the conversation about what you need to actually move that needle?
So I would argue that we are moving the needle. I would argue that if you look at our, like, our state accountability scores, we're one of the highest in the region for our overall score in terms of the overall, all the accountability indexes. You also.
Can you explain what those are, just for a sec?
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, overall graduation rates, overall state assessment scores. They also look, which we're very, which we've had a lot of success in it, at growth rates. So they don't just look at, and they assess in English, science and mathematics. Attendance, those are another indicator, what they call chronic absenteeism, access to career readiness. So there's 12 different indicators that the state measures and compares districts. I will say it's difficult in Fairfield County because you can't compare us to a Wilton or a Ridgefield. We are demographically very, very different than those communities. You know, and, and even with the other indicators like AP exams, for example, you can't really compare apples to apples because in Bethel, if you take an AP class, you take the assessment. We require students to do that. In other communities, they don't. So that's why the state accountability scores, I think, are the best measures to look at that, which we have done well on. Now, but to answer your question, which was, do you have the resources? I, I would argue probably not. And it's a balance between, you know, what's acceptable in terms of a tax increase versus what the needs of the system are. And so we have long discussions about, do we need, to one of the speakers tonight, whose daughter didn't get intervention services, right?
Right.
We've had lengthy discussions, I can speak on behalf of the board, where we have needed more people, in fact, to do that. But again, knowing kind of where we were coming out of COVID, in, in a time of inflation, incredibly huge healthcare expenses, which we did, I think, a great job reducing. All of those.
You did, by the way.
Yeah, all of those pieces, you know, went into play with that. And, you know, and I have to be honest with you and not to throw us down a rabbit hole, but I, I think I'm pretty afraid of what I'm seeing coming out of the state right now in terms of proposed bills, which could have much more implications with unfunded mandates. So to answer your question, do I think we have everything we need? No. But, and I think that's the balance the board has constantly like struggled with because.
I'd just like to comment too. Would you bring up a good point, Brad, which as we're facing budget increases, inflation, all the challenges of COVID, to ask that question? I ask that question every year. Is this enough? Do we, are we doing what we need to do for our kids? And we have a large group of kids in the middle. Their growth rates are not what they should be. They're kind of, they're moving very slowly. They're not growing the way we'd like to see them grow. So yes, we could use more resources. We're very, very lucky here in Bethel to have a very committed staff who are always doing more with less. The commitment, I couldn't ask for a greater commitment from them. But we may have to reach that point if we aren't, as you say, moving the needle as much as we should be, we'd like to be for our kids.
And I didn't mean that as a negative criticism. I mean, I'm just sort of looking at some of the data that's available out there and thinking, hmm, this isn't quite where it feels like it ought to be.
Oh, we don't disagree. I mean, especially after COVID. But I, but I do think in comparison to a lot of other communities locally and across the state, we are very competitive and we're proud of that. And I think that's what attracts a lot of our, our families to our system.
So I see a lot of, and I don't need to get into the detail on it. I see a lot of different lines that have changed and it looks like things have moved around. Do you see an opportunity in future budgets to kind of reconstruct the fiscal structure of the department? Or do you think when the 10% housing increase that's already on the, on the planning board for this year hits and those. on the planning board for this year hits and those new families start bringing more kids in, that we're going to have to be having a whole different conversation next year or the year after?
I do think we're going to have to have conversations. If we continue to have the, the rate of increase that we've been seeing.
Right.
I do believe we're going to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. There's a Board of Finance.
You want to speak?
No, I believe he's, are you the high school? You're, you're taking care of all the audio equipment. Is that correct? Would you like to speak?
Yes.
I'm, I apologize. I thought he was up on the mic. Please.
I'd also like to, I don't know if, I didn't know if I was eligible to speak as a student. I am? Okay. Christopher Baker, 3 North Hartstone Drive. I've heard a lot of parents speak. I've heard a lot of teachers speak. But I thought it'd be nice to offer the students' perspective. As someone who sat in for a lot of the board meetings, and someone who has.
He films our board meetings.
I do sit, I've sat in for quite a few of the board meetings, starting from 2020 all the way to just about now. And as someone who goes through the school system, I'd say, I was watching the board work and the Board of Finance from the little meetings I have sat in. They've put in a lot of effort. And it reflects in the students, as a lot of us, even speaking for myself, I did struggle throughout COVID, getting accustomed to working on Zoom and figuring out how to get through all the technological issues. But the teachers worked hard, the board worked hard to make it work for us. And as we're returning to regular style of school, we're starting to get back to normalcy. And I'd like to thank the board for working tirelessly and around the clock to get us where we are.
Richard again. I just want to say, I like everything what you're doing like that. Just the information I look for. 20 years ago, 25 years ago, I made tables for the lower grades, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and with a turn-in for the teacher to set at. And I did it with wood and, you know, the tops were made so they wouldn't break anything. And I, quite a few of the schools I did that for. But I'm not, I'm not trying to make myself look better. I'm just telling you, there are people who do that and they don't ask for anything other than that. If we know what we're doing and how we're doing it, what's going on. And I spent a lot of time with the teachers and also the upper people, like him, and, and the other people. And so I was happy to do all that for the kids. I also traveled on, they called me and I traveled on buses to help some, some kids, some kids had a little bit of a problem. And I always talked to them and settled them down. And it was, it was nice. I enjoyed that myself. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Is there anybody else? All right. Well, again, thank you for coming out tonight. We have a Board of Finance meeting tomorrow night at Town Hall, Meeting Room B. Everybody's welcome.